Good evening and welcome to the April twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four meeting of Longview City Council. Tonight, the prayer and pledge will be led by Thomas McDaniel, founding pastor of Lifebridge Christian Center. Pastor Thomas is also the founder of the Longview Dream Center, which exists to provide basic needs to people of Longview and East Texas. Please rise.
Ms. Bowerheads, Father, we give thanks. We thank you for this day. We thank you for your hand upon our lives and, Lord, we thank you what's before us this evening. God, we thank you for our wonderful city and your hand upon it, God. You told us, Lord, that when we build, that, Lord, we're to build our foundation upon those things that are important, Lord God, those things that are strong. God, we ask you to build this city, Lord God, in Gray County, upon your rock, God. And thank you, Lord, that your word says that when the weather's, that when the storm comes, that, Lord, that the rock will be able to sustain, Lord God. And so, Father, we thank you for that. We thank you, Lord, that you said righteousness exalts a nation. And so, God, we thank you for that as well. God, we ask you to bless this council. We ask you to bless our city. We ask you to bless our teachers, our school system, Lord, and all that we are endeavoring to do. God, we thank you for your hand upon us. Lord, we thank you that, Lord, you also told us to build on the foundation of wisdom and integrity. Lord, you told us to build our lives upon hard work. And, Lord, you told us to build our lives, Lord God, upon congruent faithfulness, faithfulness. And so, God, we put our lives before you. We thank you, though, for your wisdom tonight. We thank you for your, your hand upon us in every way. It is in your, it is in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen. Let's say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Well, tonight is a very special night. We will be hearing from our scholarship recipients. These young men and women submitted their applications to the scholarship and we got to read every one of them. And once again, I am so proud of our youth and the ideas that they have and the strength of their education. Education in Longview is very, very good across all four school districts. I was so impressed with these young people's hearts and their minds and their, their thought processes. So I think you all are going to get to sit back and listen to four outstanding essays tonight. And we'll start off with Halsville's Ariam Patel.
Longview is a city I call home. Dating back to the late nineteen ninety's, my parents made the executive decision and settled down in the small town of Longview, Texas, spending the next twenty-plus years creating a successful business. Many foreigners view Longview as a small town that doesn't have any attraction for them to stop for or even drive to other than a designated event. Longview is a city that deserves love because of the comfort and community atmosphere it provides for its residents. To me, Longview is the best place to live because of its geographical location. Longview is strategically placed between major highways, Interstate twenty and Interstate thirty. Major cities like Dallas and Houston are only a couple hours away, allowing for individuals to have easy access to whatever they might desire. Longview is also very calm. Compared to nearby cities like Tyler, Longview has better traffic management, allowing for individuals to travel from point A to point B in an efficient manner. Longview is also growing, allowing for more communities and diverse individuals. Longview is, is, is in its early stages of development, which is a major fa- major factor that can intrigue many people. Longview incorporates many big-name facilities like the Gap Warehouse and the Dollar General Distribution Center, creating a town of wealth. Facilities like these can help individuals move to Longview, creating jobs and opportunities that will allow for better futures in many households. Longview has many options available, thus advocating for future generations to stay here. Although Longview may not be the biggest, brightest, or nicest, Longview is where I call home. Furthermore, in order to bring more people to Longview, I see it necessary to advocate all the benefits of Longview. The, the use of social media is powerful, and I believe by expressing my opinions about our city to other individuals will allow them to consider Longview as their future home. The use of Facebook ads and Instagram ads can encourage others to settle here. Many individuals do not know the real reality of what Longview has to offer, thus making them steer away from this town. Another, another factor that brings people to Longview is the vast number of community events. Longview is home to the higher bull and races, causing many to travel here from long diff- long distances for this one event, creating a community celebration. The July Fourth Celebration in Longview is also an event that brings the community together, making the people of Longview feel as one. With the use of social media, I believe that I can bring more people to Longview because they are unaware of the true reality of what this city has to offer. Community is a vital component of Longview, driving many individuals to move here and settle here for future generations to thrive. Longview is a town you should call home.
Our next scholarship, we read by Longviews, Shemai Nivoli.
Growing up, my parents stressed the importance of technological literacy. After all, the world was becoming increasingly reliant and on technology and specialists to secure, safeguard, and maintain sensitive information, virtually all of which is now stored on computers. Furthermore, the global economy was particularly benefiting from the continuous trickle of revolutionizing innovations in the field of technology. For example, two thousand and six was the year I was born and the year Apple released the first iPhone, though my parents claim that they gave me the nickname Siri First. Google launched its advanced Google Earth mapping service and Amazon introduced the cloud. While Longview is currently most known for its stunning natural beauty, generous southern hospitality, and of course, the Great Texas Balloon Race, to attract an increasingly large portion of employees who would ultimately settle in Longview, I believe the city should begin diversifying its job market, specifically emphasizing the ever-expanding technology sector. Catering to a new population does not and should not mean relegating the current qualities of the city that make Longview a gem in East Texas. Instead, seeking highly skilled and specialized workers by opening up job opportunities in the technological field should be merely an addition to the businesses and activities already in Longview. In fact, the technological field is so broad that most jobs would supplement and support the existing livelihoods in our city. For instance, cybersecurity specialists could ensure the safekeeping of local companies' sensitive data and information, which are more prone to cyber attacks than ever before. Software developers could work closely with leadership executives of businesses to address issues and provide solutions. Data scientists could identify trends in city public data and work with the local government to improve the quality of life for all of Longview's residents. While I probably will not be able to convince Apple to open a branch in Longview, I can do my part to ensure the next generation of Longview citizens are well-versed in technology and prepared to enter an increasingly competitive job market while hopefully contributing to the Longview community in the future. As a two-time National Officer of the Technology Student Association, a STEM-oriented career and technical student organization composed of three hundred thousand middle and high school members across the country, I recognize the importance of technology and technology education in the nation's economy and people's lives. Utilizing my leadership experience within this technology-centered organization, I hope to host technological literacy workshops to teach essential skills to district elementary and middle school students. I also plan to enhance Technology Student Association chapters by acting as a student advisor at my own high school and expanding chapters to include every middle school within the LISD school district. The future is technology, the future is now. By harnessing the power of technology and the exponential growth of jobs within this sector, we can educate and attract an entirely unique group of people who would positively contribute to our beloved Longview community for years to come. Thank you.
Our next scholarship, we read by Pine Trees, Ada Stafford.
In two thousand and twenty-two, on the day after Mother's Day, my mom found out that her sister had committed suicide. I've had a pretty easy life, and I'm extremely grateful for everything that I have. However, it makes me extremely upset to think about the horrible occurrences that happened to my parents and so many others when they were younger. On my mom's side of the family, there was a lot of abuse. Growing up in this way affected my mother and her brothers and sisters in a very hard way. My mom was able to make a positive change. Through thick and thin, our family bond holds strong. My mom is one of the strongest people I know. After the death of her sister, mental health was a very important topic in our family. We all became closer and cherished the bonds we have and cherished the bonds we have because the death of my aunt made us realize how important it is to show others that they are loved. For this reason, I make it a priority to show others around me at school and work that they shine a positive light in the world. In September two thousand and seventeen, reporter Jimmy Daniel Isaac with the Longview News Journal published an article about mental health in Longview, Texas. According to his information, Longview has a strong need for more mental health facilities. I've talked to several people that discuss how unhappy the Longview area can seem. This is the opposite of what I want people to think about Longview. The Keep Longview Beautiful organization is an important aspect in the mental health of Longview as well. With more organizations like that, we would be able to push a Longview that draws people in. I want others to have a positive view of Longview in a way that makes them feel happy and excited to move here or even visit. To shine a light on the mental health of citizens of Longview, I believe we should build a centralized website where people can gather information about local support, address concerns, and call a hotline. This would make a major change in the Longview we see today. It is time we celebrate the beauty of living in Longview and the freedom and creativity we can express here. Together, we can continue to make Longview a living paradise and address the mental concerns of its residents.
And finally, we have Allison Robinson from Spring Hill. Allison went through hoops today to get here because she just finished a tennis tournament. So thank you for being here, Allison. And you didn't have to change clothes, but thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Longview is a beautiful city surrounded by a culture filled with love, kindness, and selfless service. People often perceive small towns as places with limited businesses, organizations, cultural offerings, and healthcare. Therefore, the misconception that Longview does not have a lot to offer causes many people to overlook our town when deciding where to live. Despite this, Longview is filled with charm and character that no other East Texas community has to offer. Specifically, Longview has a vibrant selection of small businesses such as Wild Honey Creamery, L E Bs, and Behrens that provide the citizens of Longview with exceptional services. Additionally, Longview has an amazing arts district that works to unite citizens through the arts. For instance, Longview Museum of Fine Arts and East Texas Symphonic Band provide those interested in the arts with the ability to participate in and enjoy artistic expression. Longview is surrounded by the beautiful nature that East Texas has to offer, and the city of Longview has given citizens the ability to enjoy the outdoors through the Longview Arboretum and city parks. Lastly, Longview has a variety of hospitals and healthcare resources that work together to ensure the health of Longview citizens. It is unfortunate that some perceive Longview as a city that does not have a lot to offer because that is simply not true. Longview has business, culture, nature, and healthcare that work together to provide the best living experience for its citizens. I aim to bring more people to Longview by returning after becoming a doctor in order to practice medicine. I plan to attend Texas A&amp;M University to earn a degree in biomedical science with an emphasis in medicine. After receiving my bachelor's degree, I hope to further my education and become a medical doctor with the intention of practicing pathology. I aim to lead with integrity and trust, and I hope to surround myself with rewarding experiences. Along with caring for patients, I also hope to promote integrity and trust within the workplace. With my role in healthcare, I will be able to attract people to Longview who are looking for a city that offers exceptional healthcare services. Additionally, I look forward to serving Longview in the future through a local church and community organizations. Over the years, I have watched the people of Longview give back to the community through experiences such as the Great Texas Balloon Race, the Longview Kennel Club Dog Show, and Art Walk Longview. And these selfless community members have inspired me to volunteer within the Longview community through its organizations and experiences. In a world where people long for community and hospitality, Longview has everything to offer. From its businesses and organizations to its experiences and citizens, Longview is the perfect place to call home, and I look forward to showing others the wonderful charm of Longview.
All four come back in now, please. And also, we have the Walmart that's always grateful to come with us and Seronda, if you can hear, but she's on here tonight. We have Chris Spower and Tabasha Hall. Please come up and present these recipients with y'all's Walmart certificates, please. Thank you. Thank you, Walmart. Y'all are awesome. Hey, come and get a picture with us, and then we'll get a picture with Doc on the front. Walmart, I'll get to go now. See what I mean? Excellent, excellent essays from wonderful students from wonderful schools, and we have so much to be thankful and proud of here in Longview. I will miss this part of council dearly, getting to hear these scholarship recipients read their essays because it just does my heart good to know that we're, we're on a good path and our future is bright with our, with our education and students coming up. So thank you all so much, and best of luck to each of you on your endeavors. We're now to citizen comment. I do have one speaker card. Karen Wright.
Hello, my name is Karen Wright. My address is one oh one five McCann Street, and I'm here to talk to each of y'all about One Love. Being that each of you sit on this city council board, you must be concerned about this community's well-being. I mean, that's why you hold these positions, right? So then why does it appear that several of you are basing your opinions on our organization off of other people's opinions? I do know that a couple of you have sat across the street from our organization and taken pictures of our building and the individuals there that we service. So now I'm asking you, how can you have the opinion that you have about our organization when you have never even stepped foot into our building? And then I'm going to go like a little further here because I'm going to ask you to come spend the day with me. And then I'm going to ask you, after you spend the day with me, then let's talk about your feelings, your concerns, and your frustrations. And since some of you think One Love is so bad, then please tell me why Longview P D and surrounding hospitals are some of the first people that drop off individuals at our doorstep. And sometimes they do not even make it to the doorstep before that car is pulling out of our parking lot. And you know why? Because I can tell you, they do not know what to do with these people or how to help them, and they don't even care to invest the time to help these people. And no shelter around here will even approach these people because you know why? They have a medical condition, and that, that's a liability to them. But you know who does? We do, at One Love. So I'm going to ask you, next week, Wednesday or Thursday, at nine a.m., come there, spend the day with me. Walk inside that building, come across from the street and come inside and sit there with me, and then I want to hear your opinion. Then I could even respect your opinion. And since you took the time to actually step across that street and come into our building, you would see for yourself exactly what we do in that building. And I'm not one for politics, and I'm not even a political person. I don't even know who half of you are up here, to be honest with you. But you know what? This is something I hold very dear to my heart, and I'm very passionate about. I have a master's in social work, and I could go anywhere I want to work and make way more money than I do here or even volunteer at other organizations. But this is something that I'm passionate about. And so I'm going to ask you to step out of your comfort zone, like I have tonight, and come here to speak to you, and come inside and spend the day with me, and then let's have a conversation about your feelings and your thoughts and any of the concerns that you have and have an open, mature conversation about it instead of basing your opinion on somebody else's opinion. See for yourself. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more speaker cards. We are now to public safety update. We will start with Chief Boone.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. McPhee. So a little behind on this, but we'll cover some March stats, even though we're at the end of April. See, our priority one calls for service, we're just about four minutes and fourteen seconds, just over four minutes on our response time on those calls. Calls for service during the month were just over five thousand fifty-one hundred eighteen. Our traffic stops were three thousand seventy-three for the month. So again, when you actually put that in perspective, that's about a hundred traffic stops a day. And to go with that, it's not just about writing citations, but it's about improving quality of life, reducing social harms by getting people to slow down, get people to stop at stop signs and red lights and so forth. So definitely, there's, there's a reason behind that, and it's trying to improve overall safety for everybody. DWI cases, we actually had forty for our last month, and then our crashes were just over two hundred for the month. We had some resilience training for police officers on March nineteenth. This was actually a, we hosted it at the police department, and it was sponsored through Texas Municipal League, so that was free training. So we had several of our own officers attend, and then also officers from other agencies as well. And this is basically concentrating on officer health and wellness, so definitely was thankful. Love our new facility and have, thankful to have a facility where we can bring other training in like that and, and host it and hopefully show some other first responders in our area what we have to offer in Longview. I want to thank Mother's Day out at Marley Baptist Church. We went out there and did a little show and tell, but also you can see we, we came back with about as much as we gave. And they, they definitely fixed us up on goodies to bring back to the PD, so we appreciate that. I don't know how well that lined up with all the health and wellness we were learning, but it's still fun to have. And then also, Birch Elementary, they've invited us out for several years. On March twenty-seventh, went out there and helped with their Read-A-Thon, and definitely thankful to be included and be part of that every year. And we commissioned four, or excuse me, five new officers on April fourth, and we have about six that are finishing up field training right now. And we have another six that are in police academy right now, so, but we're always still looking for more. But we're definitely thankful to have an influx of officers coming in and cadets coming in to be, to be officers. And our Love Longview Project back on April sixth, Saturday, April sixth, was very successful. If you look at some of the numbers there, ten tons of litter were picked up, eleven tons of bulky waste, four hundred and eighty tires, and over three hundred volunteers. So definitely thankful for all the volunteers that we had that came out and helped support that. And obviously, this is way bigger than just the police department and the city, and definitely thankful for our community getting involved with this and helping out, so. Some tenure pictures, our tenure breakfast we had back on April ninth, we have Officer Chris, Chris Clayton with thirty-five years of service, and then Officer Bird Song with twenty years of service. And we had Detective Eric Wilson with five years of service, our, one of our records personnel there, Amanda Pendleton with ten years of service, and then our Criminal Investigations Division Sergeant Trevor Yates with fifteen years of service. And Sergeant Jackie Howes, some of y'all may recognize the name or the face, thirty-eight years of service, and he's decided he's going to call it quits. So come out and celebrate with us on May third. We keep a little, we keep stats at the PD on, you know, how much years of service and ages and all this good stuff. And I was looking at that the other day and realized that the average age at our department is actually younger than the years he has worked at the department, but. And lastly, again, like what I was just talking about on, we definitely have a, we've got some officers and some cadets in training right now, but, but we want more. So come be like these young adults we're talking about earlier. Come be a part of Longview, be a part of the technology, be a part of everything else, be a part of our community, be a part of the guardians of our community, and definitely come and join our team. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Boone? Thank you, sir. Chief Stillman.
Good evening, Mayor Matt Member of the Council, Mr. McPhee. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update of some activities in the fire department since our last meeting. I also want to back up and cover tenure breakfast. Happened back on April the ninth. We celebrated the accomplishments of five employees. The combined total years of service of these five employees is just shy of one hundred years, so that's kind of a, kind of a Hallmark moment. Just in the top picture there, going from left to right, Captain Marcus Delaney with twenty-five years, Captain Tim Miracle with twenty years, EMS building specialist Carla Rains with five years, and fire driver engineer Josh Parrish with twenty years. And then wasn't, he wasn't able to make the breakfast, but down in the picture below, Captain Josh Phillips with twenty-five years. So we appreciate their time, their energy, their effort, and what they've invested in our department, and they certainly are part of what makes us better. We had the opportunity also in April to do some training with one of our partners here in town, one of our primary stakeholders, Krista's, Krista's Healthcare System. They sent representatives that were from all of their clinics or their hospitals, from Marshall to Kilgore to the two here in Longview, to do some decontamination training. And you realize that East Texas, here in Northeast Texas especially, we've got a very heavy industrial base, oil and gas, petrochemical, industrial, agriculture, everything. And so the chances that they could have a patient arrive at their facility with some type of contamination that needed to be deconed out in the parking lot before they allowed them to come into the emergency room for treatment and potentially expose everyone else to some type of a chemical exposure or anything. It's just a good exercise to get them familiar with the equipment that they have at their facilities, and it's a good tie-in with our hazardous materials team who would also be a part of that response. So it's just a great three days worth of training, and hopefully they took away some golden nuggets from that. Hopefully, it's one of those things that will never happen, but if it does, they're a little bit better prepared because of this training. Well, the fire department was able to participate recently in the city job fair. You know, we're always looking to hire good people. We had the opportunity to interact with people that are already city employees from other departments as well as people from the outside. I'll show you on the next slide where some of that pays off, but we had a lot of interaction, a lot of great conversation, and really got to show. a lot of great conversation, and really got to showcase what the Longview Fire Department has to offer. And onboarding of new firefighters, we took a big step in filling several of our vacancies that we've been carrying for the past several months. We put on eight new guys there on the top, well, nine altogether, but the eight new guys, five of those are coming to us from other fire departments with some other, some previous years of experience. So I'll just go down that list real quick. Fire apprentice Gabe Higgins is coming to us out of the Frisco area. Firefighter medic Ben Edwards is a Longview resident, has been working at the Marshall Fire Department. Fire apprentice Trey Pope comes from the Canton area. Firefighter medic Tyler Drennen from Tyler, who's been working in Marshall also. Fire apprentice Peter Cook from Tyler. Firefighter medic Ethan Cooper from Diana area came to us from the Marshall Fire Department. Firefighter medic Price Williams, who lives in Tyler, came to us from the Marshall Fire Department, and firefighter medic Cody Baker from Mineola came to us from the Marshall Fire Department. So we're certainly glad to have their experience.
Does Marshall have any fire people?
Well, they don't have many left. Chief Cooper and I are kind of at odds with one another right now, but we'll, we'll work that out. We're certainly glad to have these guys on board with us. They're gonna help, help us tremendously as we enter the summer months. And then down below in the, in the other picture is firefighter medic Claude Dickens. Claude actually worked for us, left to go pursue greener pastures in the metroplex, decided that that wasn't his fire department home, and he came back to us, and we welcome him back with open arms, so we're glad to have him back on board. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any question for Chief Steelman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're now to consent agenda. Any items council that pulled off for separate discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now to items of committee interest. Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. Pine Tree Middle School students Autumn Bernard of the 5th grade in Landon Edney out of 6th grade each won third place at the 2024 Northeast Texas Poetry in Schools Contest. It's a regional contest about, including schools from 17 counties in Northeast Texas. Over 800 poems per grade level are submitted each year. The top three from each grade level are selected and to be publicly knowledge and published in an anthology. Congratulations to those young people. Congratulations to the other young people that were here tonight. And the last item of business is that this coming Thursday on May the 2nd, the United States will celebrate the National Day of Prayer. There will be several locations, some of which I'll be leading as we get up to the National Day of Prayer next Thursday on May 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Miss Snotty.
Good evening, everyone. That's my drum roll. The city of Longview has scheduled a come and go reception for 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, May 9th to celebrate Mayor Andy Mack, who will complete his third and final three-year term as mayor this coming month. The reception will take place at City Hall, 300 West Cotton Street, prior to the May 9th city council meeting at 5:30 p.m. and include remarks at 3:30 p.m. May 9th is the final city council over which Mayor Andy Mack will preside, prior to a new mayor elected on May 4th, being sworn into office on Thursday, May 23rd. So you guys, please come out with some, well, nine years.
Thanks, Nona, I'll get you for that one.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Wade.
Yes, sir. I have a couple of things tonight. Longview Parks and Recreation is scheduled to host a public meeting from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. on Tuesday, May 7th at Broaden Recreation Center at 201 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. The meeting will be an opportunity for residents to voice their opinions, suggestions, and ideas regarding recreational activities, services, and programming offered at Broaden Recreation Center. Excuse me. The Parks and Recreation Department is committed to ensuring that programming aligns with the needs and interests of the community and input from residents in a central, is essential in shaping the center's offerings. The input gathered at the meeting will inform future programming decisions, ensuring that Broaden Recreation Center continues to serve as a valuable resource for residents of all ages. And last, on Easter Sunday, I lost a very good friend, Ms. Janice Barney, just wanted to recognize her. She was a big fan of our Longview City Council. She was a big fan of Longview sports and of Dallas sports as well. So we hope her family is doing well, and then rest in peace, Ms. Barney. That's it, Mayor Matt.
Thanks, Ray. Ms. Renee Stitt.
I defer my mind to Councilwoman Gamboa.
It's a, it's a, it's a pun. Happy April 25th. If you know, you know. You can take a picture and look at it later. The Spring Hill Junior High 7th grade band and 8th grade band recently attended the UIL concert and sight reading contest. Both bands received straight ones and received the sweepstakes. Congratulations. Also, in more Panther news, the Spring Hill Junior High Math and Science Team, the Texas Math and Science Coaches Association, 4A Middle School, had a state meet, and they got first place. Congratulations. We have some more Panthers that did a great job. Congratulations to Spring Hill's best prep award recipients, Allison Robinson for Community Excellence, Brady Meyer with Boys Cross Country, Abigail Fisher with Girls Soccer, Faith Ann Chan with Girls Golf, and Haley Smith, the student athletic trainer. In baseball, Carson Tidwell, a second-place team, Andrew Gruders, first-place team, and Trigfield, second-place team. Way to go, guys. Congratulations. We also had some beautiful ladies of ours from the city, Ms. Holly Fuller and Stephanie Adams go to the 40th Annual Governor's Volunteer Awards, where they represented the city of Longview well. They won the Community Champion Award. Thank you Partners in Prevention for all your hard work. I had the distinct honor of, at Birch Elementary of honoring Mr. Sauseda on his retirement. He was actually my first teacher when I immigrated here from Mexico, so thank you, Mr. Sauseda, for all your hard work. I really appreciate you. Thank you Habitat for Humanity with your 1,000 hearts. Thank you for helping reconstruct and build over 1,000 homes in our area that bring better quality of life. Thank you to the Longview Gregton Rodeo and everybody who worked it. Thank you to Chicks and Chaps for raising funds for cancer survivors and people who are currently going through that. We really appreciate you. And Cinco de Mayo is coming up at the Arboretum. Come out to hear some live music and take part of the taco eating contest. There will be an award. And the last thing, because there's a lot of great things happening in District 5, is today Harzance Village officially opened on Nicky Drive. So thank you to Ms. Julie Rachels and her team for what they're doing to uplift our community and restore women.
I have nothing.
Mr. McPhee.
I do have one thing to recognize those employees that are general government employees, not in police and fire, that we celebrated their tenure. With five years of service, we have Jose Alborato, Anna Cooper, Carl Earnhardt, Zachary Shaner, Leah Shreves, James Ward, and Sarah Will Hoyt. With 10 years of service, in the pictures Dale Hawbaker, Heidi Nance, and Rodney Portley. And last but not least, with 30 years of service, my friend Darryl Young.
Okay, this week, I was pleased to be surprised to see my grandchildren had a ride to school in a fire truck. They apparently won this in an auction somewhere, and I got pictures of it, and I thought, wow, what a great thing. And they said the people at Fire Station 1 were just fantastic. Andy James and Slow Poppy got to ride in a fire truck and tour the facility. And, you know, both you got, both you chiefs, reason I brought this up, thank you for your interaction with the community and for being willing to do this. I know both of you all do these things at certain auctions, at different fundraisers throughout the year, and it does make a difference when kids and their families can kind of know that y'all are real, you know? You're, you're not just out there, you're real, and, and you take good care of them, and you show them a great time, and they loved it. Now they both want to be firefighters, so what do you know? Okay, thank you all very much. Appreciate that. It was a great time, and they really enjoyed it. The Wine Swirl. The downtown Longview Wine Swirl returns Saturday, April 27th. Learn more at visit longviewtexas.com/wineswirl. Okay, the Nina or Nina, the Nina Effect. The Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center will host the Nina Effect 5K Run and One Mile Dog Walk on Saturday, May the 4th. And now there's a celebration for Ms. Councilwoman Nona Snotty. Nona, community is invited to a celebration for Councilwoman Nona Snotty, who will be completing her third and final three-year term next month. Celebration is scheduled for 7:00 p.m. on Thursday, May the 23rd, at the Stamper Resource Center. So congratulations, Nona, you've been awesome. We came in together, we'll go out together.
That's right.
We did that in school too, didn't we? Came in together, went out together, didn't we?
We did.
We did. Okay, just one reminder, you know, city elections are going on. Please go out and vote. Your vote counts, and your vote needs to be heard. If you don't take time to vote, don't take time to complain. That's the way I look at it. And with that, God bless. Until we see you next time, we are adjourned.